Meeting to order.
Good evening, everyone. Certainly good to be here. Good evening.
See. My computer quit on me.
Uh, any questions on the agenda? Consent agenda?
Which is which?
Any, any, uh, questions on the consent agenda?
I, the special needs bus or buses?
Yeah, we, uh, we're gonna pay for it out of, uh, air funds. Right now, we have, uh, situations where we have to use, uh, transport people, I mean, kids, and our employees have to go to various locations. And, uh, so we decided it was, got proven on our part, and that was one of the ways we could use our air money. And, uh, we just thought it was a good expenditure. I mean, if you sure, Mr. Bale can give you more information if you want it.
Is that A bus or?
A bus.
A bus?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions on the agenda, all consent agenda, either one? Okay, let's go right down to... Number nine? How far we go down?
Yes, sir. The last time we had, oh, we selected sites for next high school, and I'm gonna recommend that we built Stewart's Creek High School, you know, it was two thousand thirteen. We, uh, had considerable discussion last time, plus we gave you information, uh, projected numbers, uh, plus, uh, a map of the county schools, and two separate proposals. One, why we think we ought to build Stewart's Creek, and the second one would be the result of building it at Rock Vale. And, uh, you know, I'd asked, and I know Mr. Mr. Donald Drinkin couldn't be here because of illness, but I'd ask that you look that over, see if you had any questions. And I probably will be prudent on my part to kind of just quickly go back over what we did last time and some projected numbers. We've tried to condense it into this, this little, uh, folder. And the first sheet shows... The first sheet, uh, if you look at the top chart and the number to the far left where it says count, these were the numbers that were reflected at the end, at the seventh month of last year. For example, Blackman had two thousand eighty-nine, Eagleville three sixty-seven, and we're in two thousand eight, Oakland sixteen forty-three, Riverdale twenty-one twenty-eight, Segal nineteen nineteen, Smyrna nineteen sixty, Daniel McKee eighty-four, Holloway one thirty-three, Smyrna West sixty-two, uh, for one, uh, twelve thousand three hundred ninety-three high schools attended the county. And, uh, if you, if you drop down, and then out to the right of that, there are various, uh, it breaks, uh, school population down by free reduce, uh, full pay, uh, ethnic groups, et cetera. You drop down to the third column, uh... We start showing potential student enrollments. And... Shane, on the, uh, for Mr. Morgan?
What, what we've done is, uh, on this, on the second table, we've taken the current fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, which will be the students that opened that new school wherever we place it, and, um, calculated how many of them there are, and applied them to the current zoning. And that's, that's where you hit that middle table and the breakout that follows.
Yeah, and, and I apologize. Yeah, by the year two thousand thirteen, in the second column, uh, with, obviously that's, as, as Mr. Morgan said, if we take the existing fourth, uh, fifth graders, sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders, as you said, and promote them to the ninth through the twelfth grade, the numbers would be, without any factoring in any growth, Blackman twenty-three thirty-seven, Eagleville two sixty-six, uh, that's that dual zone, uh, the Eagleville dual zone one sixty-four, Laverne High School twenty-six oh-nine, Oakland eighteen forty-three, Riverdale twenty-one thirty-eight, Segal eighteen sixty-two, and then Smyrna two thousand and twenty-three. Now, the next column, uh, we show a three-year growth, and the very far right-hand side of that column, he's factored in a three-year compounded growth. And if it pans out at three percent per school, Blackman would have twenty-six thirty, Eagleville, uh, what's the Eagleville River, is that the dual zone, the two ninety-nine?
Literally just that dual zone.
Yeah, Eagleville would have one eighty-five. Of course, that dual zone would be split. Laverne twenty-nine thirty-six, Oakland two thousand seventy-four, Riverdale twenty-four oh-six, Segal two thousand ninety-six, and Smyrna twenty-two seventy-seven. Now, you know, I know some of us said, how in the world did Laverne get to twenty-nine hundred kids? And I think we've had that conversation seven or eight times. And, you know, it's hard to distinguish in some cases. It would take, uh, uh, an extraordinary amount of time to figure out exactly where one of those kids went. But we do know that the fifth through eighth graders down there, uh, on that end of the county, and you might say, well, that, maybe they won't get to twenty-nine, but if there's two hundred that are pulled out of Laverne High School, they're going to be going to Smyrna High School. So either way, they're, they're representative of the kids on that end of the county. Uh, so we've got a serious issue down there. Those schools, like, and I guess like Riverdale, Oakland, were built in eighty-seven, they were built for eight hundred, there've been three separate additions, uh, so they've reached the point of over two thousand kids, and there's no room at all to do any additional, uh, additions at either of those sites. Matter of fact, they're both pretty well landlocked with respect to where we can put portables. So we just can't accommodate additional growth on that end of the county. And that still doesn't address the Stewart's Creek, like, bail issue. Now, if we look down at Riverdale, we anticipate they'll have twenty-four hundred and six, and Blackman twenty-six hundred and thirty. And I've tried to make the case, obviously for a while now, that the midpoint between the three most overcrowded, between two of the three most overcrowded schools in the county would be Stewart's Creek. Because the travel distance from Laverne, Smyrna, and Blackman is not too far, and we can cascade those kids back. And if we do that, and I'll show that on a map in a second, the relief we can give Riverdale is to take that Casey Lane area, move them back into Blackman after we moved the one-mile lane area back out of Blackman and over to, to, uh, Stewart's Creek, and, uh, and Laverne Zone butts right up to Blackman, so they only have to go short distances. And if you look, you know, picture is worth, indeed worth a thousand words, if you look over here, preferably to the second... Let's see, Shane.
This is the first plan?
Yeah, the first one. It shows what we're proposing to do by building Stewart's Creek High School. And this is, this is a rather primitive effort at rezoning, but it gives you a, a pretty generic idea of what we, what we're proposing. For example, we would take, if we build Stewart's Creek, we'll take seven hundred five kids, uh, out of Laverne, which should bring their enrollment back to nineteen oh seven. That's not factoring in growth, though.
That's right.
Okay. We would take, uh, out of Smyrna High School, three hundred and, hang on, just a second. Four thirteen, and move them into Stewart's Creek. And then we would take out of Blackman, uh, five forty-two, which would bring Stewart's Creek to sixteen hundred sixty. Now, at the same time, Smyrna High School, uh, uh, would get three forty-two back from the Blackman areas, is that right, Shane?
That's right.
And you can see that it kind of butts up to the Smyrna Zone. It's, and in this map, it shows, I think, pretty, uh, definitively that there's not, uh, not large travel distances. So when we move those kids back from Blackman to Smyrna, we get sixteen eighteen, which creates room for the three hundred and three kids to come back out of Riverdale, uh, back into Blackman, and I think the, you know, which would leave us with nineteen fifty-four at Riverdale. Now... And what we like about that, and, and I got, we've got, had to be mindful of, when we take these kids from Laverne, if, when we move them to Stewart's Creek or Blackman, in particular, Blackman, one of the worst arteries with respect to roads in the whole county, is the roads those kids from Laverne are going to be traveling. They're going down Ammifell Road, they're going back through Lee Road, through Rocky Fork, Rocky Spring Road, all two-lane, uh, two-lane arteries to the school. If we have to bring them all the way back into Blackman, there's how far? We're talking twelve miles, eleven miles?
Some, yeah, some twelve to fifteen miles.
Twelve to fifteen miles. Okay, the next map shows that second plan, which is, really, from my perspective, puts us in a real quandary. If we do, and we do need another high school back toward Rock Vale. The question is, you know, we all know it's gonna be hard enough to get fifty million to fund one, much less two. But that said, uh, his proposal is that you take three hundred eighty-five out of Laverne High School and move them to Blackman. And the dilemma there is, if you dig any deeper back into the Laverne Zone, you're going, how far?
For distance.
You're going an extraordinary distance to get them to Blackman. Basically, Smyrna, we left intact. They'd have, by then, I think we said, how many, I don't even know what we said it would be in two thousand thirteen. Without growth, Smyrna would be, what, Shane, two thousand, uh, twenty-three, I think?
Oh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Twenty-four thirty, that ain't right. Okay, uh, we'd have to, uh, move out of Blackman... Six hundred and two out of Blackman would go back to Riverdale, lead back to, uh, Rock Vale High School, and we would take six hundred and fifty-four out of Rock Vale, which would bring Riverdale to two hundred fifty-one, fifteen hundred and ten kids, right, Shane?
That's right.
Which really, which leaves Riverdale about eighteen seventy-five. But you still haven't given any, have, we haven't given anywhere near enough relief to Laverne, and with any kind of growth to Smyrna either one.
You've heard Eagleville, too. If you do that, you've heard Eagleville, because they're going one sixty-two.
We probably have, we've probably pulled out of Eagleville. Of course, you might view that as a, as a, as a positive rather than a negative, but I don't think the people in Eagleville would view that as a positive. I don't think that you want to take some kids out of their high school.
I'm not sure that, uh, they would want to leave.
Yeah. All right, that said...
Mr. Gill?
Yes, sir.
With these numbers, have you worked up the, uh, social economic impact on the population?
Uh, we did a little preliminary work. It's, it's going to, uh, it doesn't matter if you build Blackman or when you build, uh, I mean, Stewart's Creek or you build Rock Vale, you're gonna, you're gonna have some issues at Laverne, obviously. Uh, it's gonna create a bit of a, uh, a high poverty area, because so many of those free reduced people are coming off that Stones River Road and that Lake Point subdivision. There's nowhere else to put them, though. I don't see that we're gonna solve that issue. I don't know that it has a substantial impact on Smyrna or anywhere else. Laverne's gonna be the issue.
It might give you enough room to put an ID program down there to, to track some people that, I don't know. I'm gonna be gone, you just have to think about that.
Is okay, ask questions down?
Sure, sure, yeah.
Got two, if, if, on this, is what is in here the same as what's in the white notebook?
Yes, sir, it should be.
On the, uh, the compounded growth chart?
Yes, sir. For which one?
The...
The existing?
Yeah, existing.
Okay.
The scariest number in all of this is that Laverne twenty-nine thirty-six, and so I started looking at that. Why do, it doesn't look like you're using the current numbers in oh-nine-ten, or even in ten.
Well, a, as we talked about before, we, we had to take a snapshot in time. Some, somewhere, we have to draw the line as to where the number comes from. This particular number came from the seventh month of last year's...
Right, but I'm saying, you're saying that you're, on the top row, the current statistics.
That's right.
Why aren't those numbers transposed into the nine-ten column, or even the ten-eleven column below? What instead it looks like you did, you took the two thousand thirteen numbers from the table in the middle and moved them down there.
Well, we know how many students are in the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and we know how many are in the fifth and sixth grade currently from the city. Uh, I've got those numbers. We know that those students are gonna graduate up, so that's the number that I used.
And I think Dr. Burns' point is, they don't have twenty-six hundred and nine kids right now.
Right, right now, you're saying that Laverne's got twenty-six oh-nine, or actually, you're saying that they've got twenty-six eighty-seven. Well, they've got twenty, that, they got two thousand and ten. So you're, you're overcounting by six hundred and seventy-something. If I'm, and obviously I'm not understanding what you're trying to do.
He's not, if you, if you really, and I, I certainly see the confusion. If you look up to the column above that, the twenty-six oh-nine is really what should, is what would be reflected is their two thousand thirteen enrollment.
But, but this whole chart on the bottom is based on the idea that we're going from now to two thousand and thirteen, right?
That's right.
But you're not using the now numbers in the now year, you're using the two thousand thirteen numbers in the now.
I'm using the students that will be, that will be reflected into, th- those are the students that are gonna be at that school at that time.
In other words, that's the fifth through eighth grade students right now, there's twenty-six hundred and nine, fifth through eighth graders in the Laverne Zone right now. Follow me?
And as we graduate them up every year?
That's not their current enrollment, but if...
That's why I'm confused, because it looks like you're saying this year, there's twenty-six eighty-seven in Laverne.
Actually...
You're saying there's...
There's twenty-six hundred and nine, fifth through eighth graders in the Laverne High School Zone right now, today. And he's saying, if you took three percent on top of that for each of the next, he said it, four years, or three years, assuming that that kind of compound growth, you'd have twenty-nine hundred and somebody kids. But if we just had a magic wand, and we promoted all those guys four years today, from the fifth to the eighth, there'd be twenty-six hundred and nine in Laverne High School. I, I know you, man, you, I know you're a smart man, and you...
Well...
You have to be figured this out.
But, but you see, so these are, these aren't even really talking about current high school students, about people who may be in high school four years from now. And that's what that...
Well, yeah, but assuming that we have, like, we continue, we have a ninety-seven percent promotion rate, most of them are gonna make it, we hold.
So, well... It's still off a little bit, then. I mean, you got twenty-six, for two thousand and ten, you're saying twenty-six eighty-seven in Laverne, and you just, you know what, there's two thousand... I just find that very confusing, that, that methodology.
Yeah, I understand. But I mean, I don't, I don't think Shane had a better way, I mean, to gauge how many kids would be in high school, other than to measure the fifth through eighth graders, and promote them all four years. I mean, to me, that's probably the most scientific way you had to do it. Now, whether it's reflected, the easiest digestible way is, is another story. Doris has something.
Dor, what if we took fifth, sixth, let's see, six, seven, eight, nine, and added them up? What would that be? That would be an enrollment, uh...
Yeah, that's essentially what you're doing. That was based on last year's seventh-month figures, wasn't it?
Right, right.
On retrospect, that's what you're doing. That, that would be the same number, the current fifty-nine graders.
Because you, you're gonna lose, by the time you can get your building built, you're gonna lose three grades.
Right.
And so we're going back, looking at the, those students who could potentially be...
That will literally be affected by them.
Yes, uh-huh.
But I mean, as he said earlier, he had to have a starting point. We start on this a few months...
Sure, no, and I'm, I don't have any problem.
Yeah, I understand your point, too.
Pick a point to compare. I, I still don't see how Laverne, is it just, why are there so many more?
Lake Forest Estates.
Lake Forest Estates is a large subdivision in the nation.
Yeah.
What is the age of their kids, just, you know, mild distributed, that there's more fifth through eighth graders?
If you went back, and I kind of went back and studied the fifth through eighth grade enrollments at all them schools today, and these numbers are very close to right on. I mean, if they're, I mean, they're not off much, if they're off at all.
There, there would be nineteen hundred just from Lake Forest Estates at, in two thousand thirteen, just from that subdivision.
So this bottom chart is an attempt to add growth onto that fifth through eighth cohort?
Yes, sir.
That's pretty good, boy. And a good example of that is, on Stones River Road alone, we got three schools, uh, Lake Forest, which is in pretty close capacity, and was at one time at a thousand. Uh, we got how many, Don, seven hu, over seven hundred at Royal Waldron? And we've got how many at Smyrna Primary, I mean, Laverne Primary? We've got on that load alone, on that road alone, Dr. Burns, probably, uh, seventeen, probably twenty-two hundred K through five kids. And then if you toss in Rock Springs Elementary out there, K five, there's another nine hundred out there. You know, you got, I mean, it's just, it's just hard to fathom that many people living in that small, in that congested area.
There are younger families, which would explain why the students are younger?
Yeah.
That's right.
Mr. Blair, did you have a question?
How difficult is it to put together a percentage of growth for the last several years for each of our schools? For us to...
I could have it done tomorrow.
Because I, I'd like to see a, a track record of how we've grown, not only in the high schools, because our growth has substantially slowed compared to what we experienced four years ago. So I would, I would like to have an opportunity to see how each of these schools have grown over the last several years.
I, I've just recently, as of yesterday, gotten the attendance reports for, um, for a request that was made earlier this week for the first and the ninth month reports from attendance for the last five years. So I, I can go back and apply that growth to the five years if, if that's suitable.
For five, is it?
For the last five years.
Okay.
Thanks. Doris?
As of now, the current enrollment, we've grown up how many students?
Uh, from the end of last year, uh, we're over thirty-eight thousand, thirty-eight thousand one or two hundred as of today, and it'll continue to grow after Labor Day.
That, but we're looking at fifteen, sixteen hundred more?
Seven or eight, uh, thirty-two, two or three. We're up about eight hundred right now.
Let Mr. Blair follow up on that. Um, in general, and generally speaking, I believe, um, Mr. Sam Biggs at two point six percent that we use every year to plan by?
Well, in recent years, we've been doing it. We have also, we've been using five and a half percent.
You know, we've had years where we grew by five percent, dropped back to two, two and a half percent. But even if we don't grow, and I know, I know Mr. Blair certainly understands that, even if we don't grow by the year two thousand thirteen, uh, if they didn't grow by students, Laverne will probably have twenty-six oh-nine, uh, Blackman twenty-three thirty-seven, Smyrna twenty, twenty-three. Kind of mind-blowing.
Mr. Blair?
Mr. Gill, you, you told me the other day, we picked up two hundred and thirty-five new sixth graders from the fifth grade count at the end of last year. When we're doing this, and of course, in the growth that we have this year, has a number of city sixth graders that have taken advantage of either the magnet school or the, uh, the two new middle schools. Are you factoring in the elementary children presently in these numbers as they're going through our system into the middle, then eventually to the high schools?
Uh, these, these students that are in this, that are in this scenario that I've given you, one of these two scenarios, include all of our fifth through eighth in the tr- in a traditional setting. There's no magnet pool out here, so none of that's been factored in. We don't know what those numbers will be, we don't know where they're gonna go, or where they're gonna come from. It's very much like when we opened Central this year, we didn't know where the students were gonna come from. We can apply that same kind of mentality when we look at these, it, it's kind of where you're from.
I think, I think you, part of his question is, of course, the unknown is how many city sixth graders you factor in, you know? And I think you told me that you included...
They're all.
All the city sixth graders in it.
And all the fifth graders as well, because they'll all be in grade.
Yeah, fifth graders don't affect us, because we don't, we take the...
That wouldn't affect Laverne at all.
No, it, you know...
Brad?
The statistics I got, uh, Friday, uh, I actually got them Monday, but, uh, were reflective of Friday, we had eleven hundred and ninety-eight, uh, increase over last year. And this was reflective of Friday's figures.
Well, that's, that's the little, that's a guessing game. I mean, they're cleaning their databases up, and...
I understand, but I mean, based on what we had, uh, on Friday, and I got these figures Monday.
You got, anybody over there have those numbers? I don't, I don't think we're up to eleven hundred something kids.
Eleven hundred and ninety-eight.
We started the fifth full day, and I mean, we're now kind of the seventh day. The total of the system, the fifth little day was thirty-eight two eleven. The seventh day today is thirty-eight two fifty-four. So, you know, you, you can see we're still going a little bit expect.
Well, how much we picked up over the end of last year?
Well, that's, if, their chart had, okay, for today, we picked up twelve hundred and forty-one over the end...
End of last year, yeah.
End of last year. End of last year, we were a little different in that.
So over the start of last year, we picked up probably...
It's been being done in the neighborhood of...
Eight hundred?
Eight hundred.
Yeah.
You were pretty correct in that.
See, now, we, we, bases getting cleared.
Some years, we grow all year. Last year, because of economy and some poor closures, some high schools drop out and things that you do, we actually lost a little year in the year. Those high growth years, we gained all year long.
Dor?
I'm looking at the, uh, the chart you're talking about with, uh, and let me look at something here. L-L-E is Laverne Lake Elementary, right?
Yes, sir.
And I'm running across there, and I see eight eighty, end of the year, nine twenty-five. Then I see a plus twenty there. Explain, if, if, and I, when I looked at that, I, I was just looking at the questions and mine sits in there. And I have a... That, that's just, uh...
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would should be a hit, right?
Okay, okay. But we're talk, is that an enrollment figure or a present number?
This is people's scene. Now, there's enrollment in, in the database, and Bob runs the database. Still, right around a thirty-nine thousand, I don't know what that is. Metro didn't start the first full day till Monday, so you're gonna get notice that some are transferred. We'll have, it'll be after Labor Day when some of the northern states start before you know where every kid goes. But the counts that you see on this sheet are, we tell the county, the only kids that they have seen so far...
They've seen and have seen that.
Yes. But it's more accurate than the old data they can give.
Okay. Well, I don't wanna beat this to that, I just wanna make sure I understand this chart, which I think is pretty helpful if I can ever figure it out on the growth. So I understand how you got the original number. So for the succeeding columns, you just multiplied by three percent. You didn't, so for the next year, you didn't do four through seventh graders, and the next year, you didn't do third?
No, it's the, it's the same, it's the same group of kids.
Any chance there's some strange thing in that one little segment of the population? Any reason to think it's the...
No.
Growth is gonna be less in the lower...
I, I don't have the, uh, I don't have one of those month, those monthly reports that go up to the state, um, but when you look... Um, but when you look at the, um, there's kind of a bell curve there, but when, when you add in the city kids to those numbers, it stands that there are around thirty-two hundred a class a year, even all the way down to first grade. It, it tends to run right around three thousand to thirty-two hundred.
So in other words, if you had done it that other way, there's no reason to expect these numbers would've been much different? That, that's.
Not, not unless there's some po- uh, you know, spike in population because of birth or, you know, one thing that we haven't talked about is, is a plant that's gonna come online in, in Smyrna that'll add sixteen hundred jobs and another two hundred and eighty at a VA call center, so those are things that we need to think about too. That could cause a spike in itself.
Thank you, Sandig.
Yeah.
Blair?
You said, you've put together, you've already put together statistics for the last five years and did I, did I understand that you did the first month and the ninth month?
I, I have the numbers. I've actually been given the reports for the, I've requested the first month, the, the very first month to get there and the very last report, which is the ninth month report. And I've gotten that data, uh, for, and it lays out all the schools and all the numbers by all the grades.
So we'll be able to look at the first, the first of the year and, and the number of students in our system in all our schools and we'll be able to see the end of the year and what numbers we had compared to the, the beginning.
Right.
Okay, good.
Will you be able, will you be able to say tomorrow night?
Don?
Yes, sir.
Can I, Mr. Blair, can I finish answering this question?
Oh, he's got.
Oh, I thought you had.
He followed up before you got a chance.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I should be able to have that too.
Thank you.
At least the data.
Yes, sir.
Now, Mr. Jernigan?
Thank you. Uh, I'm looking, I'm still looking on my chart here, and I'm looking at Roy Waldron School. Last year, the number ended with six ninety and we've got six fifty-two that they've seen.
You, you're looking at this one, right?
I'm looking at this chart.
Where are you, Mr. Jernigan? Show me.
I'm actually, I'm actually looking at a.
Okay. And you're looking at this year?
That's correct, this year. I'm talking about the sixteenth, the sixth full day of school.
Okay.
Now, what I am looking at here now is that I'm looking at actual figures here and I don't see the, the growth that we're talking about. Now, we looked at Laverne Lake and looked at Roy Waldron. Those are legitimate feeder schools and continue to be feeder schools to Laverne High School, I would think. Where, where are these kids at that you're talking about? That we're, we're seeing a spike in numbers and I, I'm just, I'm looking at kids that we have seen in seats versus a spec- a number of speculation. And I guess I'm looking for you to tell me where these kids are at.
Pardon, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to do a little math here. There's three twenty-one, uh, Mr. Jernigan, let's see. First of all, that is a very transient area. That place, they'll, those kids, that, there's a probably thirty or forty less in those schools. You mark my word, you write, I know you got that little notebook over there, right now, that they'll be picking up some kids over the ne- course of the next few weeks. But if you start adding back the three twenty-one Laverne Primary, the, how many at Laverne Lake? Laverne Lake, uh, nine, or at eight eighty in, eight eighty right now, uh, so we're talking roughly twelve hundred. And how many at, uh, Roy Walden? Roy Walden's at, say, six fifty. What do we have? Twelve, that's eighteen fifty. Throw another nine hundred, uh, at Rock Springs, you know what they got? Rock Springs Elementary, nine forty-seven. Now, we're talking about twelve, what did we say? Twenty, how many, uh, twenty-six hundred kids in those schools alone? And, uh, of course, they're only picking the fifth grade up, but they're picking, he's figuring in all of Laverne Middle, which is over a thousand, I believe. I don't have these all committed to memory. That's Laverne Middle. Nine eighty-three, Rock Springs Middle, nine forty-two. Uh, there's over eighteen hundred right there between those two schools, or close to nineteen hundred. I mean, it's just a high-density area.
Mr. Gill, I asked some of the principals down there about seven hundred. What they tell me is there were a lot of foreclosures. There's a number of houses there sitting vacant right now, but the anticipation is somebody's gonna move in at some particular time. They say, cause of the number of foreclosures.
Yeah, but these are the places there.
That's subdivision. They, they say that's why the number, we haven't seen this before, really reaching a lot of, some of these vacant houses, they have a foreclosure.
And they've told them that?
Yeah, sometimes, somebody's gonna move back in quickly, I don't know.
My question is, it's not that they're going to be some growth there. My question is simply, are we taking the worst-case scenario and building on me it? When I look at this and I add a flat three percent to, uh, Laverne High School every year, uh, for the next three years, you'll end up somewhere around twenty-three hundred students, uh, at a flat three percent this year, next year, and the following year. It is, that's pretty reasonable, uh, I, I would think, uh.
You've got twenty-six hundred sitting in that zone right now, if, what we just added up there.
Fifty, right.
It's through eight.
Yeah, we've got twenty-six hundred sitting in there as a s- number of speculation. If you take the kids that's been seen in seats.
Uh, they, I think that's what they were saying, sir, is that they live there.
He's saying, I'll let them not speculation, you know, he's saying that those kids are actually, and I think it'd be helpful to him. I mean, what he, I think Mr. Jernigan's saying, if he saw where they were, where those numbers were, you'd be a little more, what, a little more content with the information. I think that's where you're coming from. But he's saying, saying that they're there.
Yeah, uh, you know, we could look at this from a, a different way, if, if you look at the screen real fast and, and I'd be glad to sit down with you 'cause this, we could play with this thing all night, but I'm just gonna give you a, a real quick glimpse of how I'm doing this. Um, if, if, there are five hundred and sixty-eight little neighborhoods that I've made up a- out of the county and all the little dots or all the little children are given a place on the map where they live. And I can pull each neighborhood one way or another to get the numbers we need to fill, fill up a zone and make it work right. And this is the method that I'm using and the, they're there. Uh, they're, they're either there or they're reporting a, a wrong address. Because we go through these over and over and over again to make sure that the address is correct.
I know it's a difficult task and when you put all those in there, I, I was just, I was just looking at the sixth day and saying, this is a hard figure right here. Those, those kids have been seen and they're sitting in a seat.
Yes, sir. And, and I play, uh, you know, in a, in a different way, I mean, I'm, I'm taking the same numbers that they, they used to make this. I'm taking the same data and I'm applying the same data to, to this and just using a different method to actually, to make it work. So we're all working with the same data, it's just how, how I visually use it and, and instead of just adding up the numbers. This way I can massage it and help you guys make the best decision.
And, and I appreciate that, that work and, and it's got to be some, some method to come to a conclusion and I understand that. And I'm just, I just want you to help me understand that conclusion a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blair?
Remind me as, as far as how the state re- reimburses us for our students. Is it on a monthly average? Uh, how, how does that work?
Refunding period is if? They're, they wait the second, third, sixth and seventh months, average day of attendance. The emphasis is on the sixth and seventh months.
Sixth and seventh?
Sixth and seventh. I'm sorry, A D M, I meant seventh.
Would we be better off to have that sixth and seventh month rather than the first and the ninth?
We have to accommodate what we have in the early part of the year, so that's the downside going to the later period.
Any other question? Do you have more presentations, Mr. Gill, or what?
Doris? I think four, just trying to look, look back at what we've experienced over the last eight years. Is that these kids don't all live in the same neighborhood. Some schools have more than others. We've seen, it seems that Smyrna, Laverne, well, Smyrna started out not being as crowded as Laverne, but, but it didn't take very long for us to make an addition to Smyrna High School in those first four years we were here. So we've seen continued growth, even at three percent. If, if we went up three percent per year, we're suddenly at twenty-three to, now, three percent of that is we're over twenty-four hundred at Laverne. So i- it's just a slow thing and if we don't make some moves today, then we're just that much further behind where we need to be as far as accommodating students, 'cause we've been over Laverne campus enough times to know we can't add anything back. And I'm not sure that you can add anything to Smyrna. Don't wanna add anymore to Riverdale. Uh, we've added to Blackman. I don't, and, and our long-range plan from years ago depicted schools in the two thousand range as being optimum for our county. So let's not push it too far beyond that range, because that gets away from that long-range plan that's been in place for many, many years now.
That brings up a good point too, Mr. Jernigan, just a little bit off of this. There were some blogs the other day that said, you know, we never built a school we could add on to and why don't, why didn't we do that? And then when you build them, we gotta fix thing. Why didn't we build two-story schools? Well, we, we have built some two-story schools and we have added on to just about every school we could add on to and so I, I want the public to know, being that we're on the air, the public to know that we have done all those things, regardless of what you read in the blogs, we've done every one of those things. That was one of Mr. Jernigan's things, to add on to the schools where we could and we've added on to a bunch in this county.
We sure have.
So I, I, that, that's a good time to clear that up and we did build two-story, we got a two-story high school out there and probably the next one we buy will be a two-story high school. So, uh, next one, wherever it is, uh, so that, I think that's a point that needs to be brought up to the public. We have done all those things. Go ahead. Any other questions on this? Mr. Blair?
With a, a possible addition to Segal and, uh, the land that's adjacent to Smyrna over on the football side, that is possibly, uh, we could possibly purchase some of that. Would the Smyrna Core allow some, uh, uh, an addition as the Segal Core would?
Why would you want a school that big, though?
Uh, we, we've had them that big. We've.
Yeah, but that's not necessarily a good thing. That's just.
I mean, what would you, if you could, to explore that thought, I mean, what would you put in the field over at Smyrna? What are you talking about?
Uh, a parking lot possibly and, and build classrooms where the present, uh, parking lot is. Is that, is that something that's conceivable?
Uh, I mean, certainly is to add on to Segal. I mean, we've got a place for twelve rooms. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'd have to think that through. You caught me off guard. I.
Yes, sir. And, and the reason I mention it, because a seventeen and a half cent property tax increase with a fifty million dollar high school, according to Lisa Nolan, i- is gonna be an extremely difficult, uh, push with the County Commission, es- especially with seven new faces, uh, I just, just wondering.
Well, it, it, it is and, uh, you know, I think back during, I've been here almost eight years and I'm probably, I think everybody on this board that's been here probably is proud of the fact that we've only added about eight or ten portals during that eight-year span. And as Bob Baker told me, we're judged as community on how we treat our children. Uh, I don't have any children in school, but I'm certainly willing to pay a little bit more to have schools. You know, it's not the kids' fault, it's not the school system's fault that people are moving in here. We don't control planning, we don't control growth. We only can do what's in the best interest of kids and I personally don't think our mindset should be, there's gonna be a tack in, tax increase if we have to build a high school. What I think our mindset should, should be is that we need to get a high school, school built. We've already held off one year. We're supposed to have it two thousand and twelve. We're gonna have schools with twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred kids in them. It's outrageous. It's not safe. Uh, we're letting the kids down to the county if we don't go down there and paddle hard with county court and if they turn their heads to funding a high school for us. So if it's just, I mean, you know, I'm not gonna be real popular with taxpayer for taking that position, but we gotta get a high school built.
I'm, I'm concerned that if we get our schools much larger, we're gonna start looking at comprehensive high schools such as we have in Davidson County with three thousand, thirty-five hundred students and how do you manage those, those major complexes? And I, I don't wanna be gloomy doom, but I'd see some of our neighboring county schools that are struggling because of sheer numbers.
I want you, I mean, I know we're not voting tonight, but I want you to consider, uh, this parting shot on this one. It doesn't matter if it's twenty-five hundred or twenty-four hundred or twenty-nine hundred. We have no way of getting those Laverne kids. It's not a safe way to get them to Blackman High School, period. And there's ample opportunity to take those kids out of Riverdale and cascade them back over to Blackman High School and it's just a, it's actually closer to Blackman than it is Riverdale. We don't need, Legable's got a pretty good thing going, there's something in the works down the pipe for an addition there. But if, if we, from my personal perspective, I don't think there's any question where I ought to go. I think it, it would be Stewart's great and I think we gotta give those people on that end of the county some relief and a safe path to get there. Uh, we're gonna increase transportation costs dramatically if we build, if we go to Rockville, 'cause we're gonna be calling kids twelve, thirteen, fourteen miles. Snell's been in the loop on this. He's nodding yes, he agrees. And I know it's a lot to ask y'all to digest in a short time, but I think we get moving on this.
No more questions. We'll move on to the next item.
Especially at implementation of pilot community-based transition class. Under I D E A, students with disabilities are eligible for educational services through the age of twenty-two years. In an effort to provide students with a more age-appropriate setting, pilot program based on M T S U campus would provide opportunities for transition into independent living. Through a community-based transition class, eighteen to twenty-two-year-old students with cognitive and developmental disability will gain greater levels of independence, employment, and self. with cognitive and developmental disabilities will gain greater levels of independence, employment, and self-determination skills. This pilot program will teach young adults the skills they need to enter the workforce. Sports and adaptations will be provided as needed by the Rutherford County School staff. The tr- the program will provide a variety of job training experience as well as training in other areas to include the following: using public transportation, accessing public agencies, shopping, banking, and participating in recreational activities. Transition training will also include apartment living with emphasis on meal planning and preparation, budgeting, and personal safety. Pilot program will initially accept up to ten students. Roman criteria will include approaching exit from high school with a special education diploma or certification of attendance within a two-year period, recommendations from the IEP team, and the ability to function in the community with minimal assistance. The program will require a one-part-time teaching position and one full-time job coach, education assistant. These programs will be funded by ERA, uh, IDEA Part B Special Education Funds, and we recommend that you approve the implementation of a pilot community-based transition class located in MTSU that would allow a group of eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-olds to participate and receive instructions in the community with funding for positions provided by ERA IDEA Part B Special Education Funds.
You've heard the recommendation, have a question, or have a motion?
Yeah, I wanted to, we don't wanna have a motion tonight.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, excuse me.
I'm just, I was, uh, Marty wanted to vote.
No, you're trying to get out of here and hurry.
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get out, what, no, wait, oh, it's nice, yeah.
Maybe I was napping or something.
Go ahead, Grant, I'm sorry.
I've got my question, I get. Now, the, on the stimulus funds, how long are tho- those supposed to be? I, I, I'm, I'm hearing some, some, something, I don't know on this.
That's what I'm asking.
Some of them on one year.
So, what, anybody heard any, any figures?
No, you're right, the, the funding, surely, come up here, I want you to speak to that issue, 'cause we had a conversation. If we get the other federal money with respect to funding those positions. So, let's talk about how we'll pick it up if we continue the program after the ERA money dries up.
After the ERA money's gone, this will take us through all of this year, and then next year we would be looking at grant funding. Writing a grant this year for approval with the State Department and looking to fund through next year.
That's what I was thinking, if it's only be based at this year, I'm gonna guarantee we have on that without.
With the ERA funding, yes, sir.
Do we have any actual figures on that? Sorry, uh, is that?
Go ahead.
Do we have any actual figures as, as what, what the cost of this is?
Uh, the cost of the part-time teacher, the, uh, coach, the EA job coach, uh, probably roughly, I'm gonna say around fifty thousand.
Sixty thousand?
Fifty, probably with that.
Thank you.
Um, my question, and I've asked Ms. Bell this, it, the long range. I think this is something that has growth potential to it. 'Cause here are eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-olds which are still in our system, who are learning to be self-sufficient individuals out in the public. And they're having, we've got the help of the university to expand this program, so it ha- it, I would think it has some long-range potential, some growth uh, potential for, uh, supporting these, these individuals.
We've been talking about this quite a while, and Mr. Gill gave us approval to talk with MTSU, and we've talked with Dr. Bonners and Dr. Severs, and we're hoping next year, or I think it's two thousand and twelve when the educational building is supposed to be completed, that we can even get some location there on, on campus. But they've been working with us, with our job, with our students for job placements, and so, uh, they would give us access to the, uh, transportation and all on the campus there.
One last, are there any other communities where this, this type of program is already in place?
Yes, sir, Vanderbilt University is doing some things with this, and so is, uh, UTT at, or TTU, rather, in, in Cookville, Putnam County.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on. We won't vote tonight, we won't.
That all right, Mark?
It's all right, yeah.
Uh, second part contractual agreement with the Wesley Foundation, Murfreesboro. Contract for lease and rental agreement between Rutherford County Schools and the Wesley Foundation is for the rental of a duplex apartment adjacent to Wesley Foundation and MTSU. This agreement includes the use of space at the Wesley Foundation Student Center at no additional charge. Wesley Foundation Student Center will be the central location from which the transition program will be based. Monthly rental of the apartment is seven hundred per month from August two thousand and ten through May two thousand and eleven, and the recommendation is to approve the lease and rental agreement of the duplex apartment adjacent to Wesley Foundation from August two thousand and ten through May two thousand and eleven at seven hundred dollars per month. This rental, along with the free use of the Wesley Foundation, will provide a location at MTSU to pilot our first community-based transition class for eighteen-to-twenty-two-years-old with cognitive and developmental disabilities. Total cost, not to exceed seven thousand dollars for a ten-month period, plus five hundred dollar deposit will be paid from ERA IDEA Part B Special Ed Funds. Question?
Sir? Kind of supervision will our system provide in this program, pilot program, or, or what?
Our staff will be with them at all times if they're there.
So, we will provide a staff member there?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. Wesley Foundation is including us with their students as peers, but our staff will be there.
Any other questions? Next.
Facilities, Rock Springs Elementary School Pavilion and Observation Deck. Principal Stephen Lewis has requested permission to construct a twenty-by-twenty-five pavilion and a sixteen-by-sixteen observation deck at Rock Springs Elementary School. Pavilion will be built in the grass just to the east of the school building at the corner of the two parking lots, and the Observation Deck will be built just outside the fence of the retention pond with appropriate guardrails for student safety and to prevent student access to the pond. These projects will be constructed, a pressure-treated lumber in the pavilion will have a metal roof. Construction of these projects will be inspected by the Rutherford County Engineering and Construction Department for compliance to project specifications. Project will be funded by Home Depot with no cost to Rutherford County School Board, and the moat, the recommendation is to approve the construction of twenty-twenty pavilion and a sixteen-by-sixteen Observation Deck at Rock Springs Elementary School funded by Home Depot at no cost to the board.
Questions?
I'm sorry, but this is just a great opportunity. If you've ever been on this campus, and I'm sure most of you have, it, you look to the west and what a view you have, and I can just imagine putting a sixteen-foot tower up there or however high, high this tower is, how much better the observation would be, 'cause it's a beautiful sight, and it's, this looks like to be a real opportunity.
Any other questions?
Do I have any, any water in the retention pond on, on, on permanent basis, I might get a fish?
They do have water in there, and there's plenty of fish in there, and I have a man that asks me regularly, can he go fishing, 'cause it's got a lock on it.
I was trying to provide him with fish to put in, it's a different, already.
Any other questions? Twelve, financial matters.
School Activity Fund receivables and payable. The Board approves the various accounts receivable and payable in the school activity funds each year. These are routine business transactions that were complete as of June the thirtieth, two thousand and ten. They're being closed out during July and August. Uh, recommend that we approve eight thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents in school activity fund accounts receivable and twelve thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventeen cents in school activity fund accounts payable as presented.
Any questions?
Move on. Uh, contract to audit school activity funds. Last year, the contract to audit the school activity funds and centralized cafeteria fund was awarded to Randall Matlock and Associates PC. Cost for the first extension will be approximately fifty-five thousand dollars. Contract allows three one-year extensions. Recommend that you approve the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven audit contract with Randall Matlock and Associates PC for the school activity funds and centralized cafeteria fund for approximately fifty-five thousand dollars.
Questions?
No, I'd like to go back. One of the things that came from this, uh, fund receivable was monies from the Central Middle School Band, went back into the fund. Will that stay at Central Middle School with the Magnet School?
Jeff?
No, those funds will be split along with the remaining Central Middle to the schools where the Central Middle students were zoned to.
That's good. It should, it should follow the students.
Any other questions?
Okay, C, uh, general purpose school budget amendments. One, transfer from fund balance to federal projects. On October the fifteenth, two thousand and nine, the Rutherford County School Board and the County Commission approved a one-million-dollar transfer resolution and ordered a loan up to one million dollars from general purpose school fund balance to the school system's federal project fund in order to avoid tem- pardon me, in order to avoid temporary cash deficits in the federal projects fund. We only had to use five hundred thousand dollars last year, but with Race to the Top and the second year of ERA IDEA, we'll need to go up to one million dollars approved total. This one million dollar transfer shall remain in the federal project fund as a designated fund balance from the general purpose school fund and may be repaid at any time as noted in a resolution passed by the Board of Education and the County Commission. The amendment decreases the general purpose school fund balance by five hundred thousand dollars and increases transfers to other funds by five hundred thousand dollars. And the recommendation is that you amend five hundred thousand from general purpose school fund balance and to budget five hundred thousand in transitions to other funds. One forty-one ninety-nine, one hundred dash five ninety.
Questions?
Move on. Uh, two, BEP ERA fund. Uh, this amendment moves six million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars from account forty-six, five-eleven, Basic Education Program to account forty-six, five-one-two, BEP ERA fund. Uh, the state is using part of its ERA funds to fund part of the BEP and other programs that flow through the general purpose school budget. Recommend that you amend six million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars from account forty-six, five-eleven, Basic Education Program to account forty-six, five-one-two, BEP ERA as presented.
Questions? Grant?
I know this is an accounting, uh, move, but is there anything hidden here? I mean, when I say hidden, I'm talking about from the standpoint of the, of the state, uh, causing us to, to lose some additional funds or to, to have them moved to a different account. Is anything of that nature?
I don't, not to my knowledge, Jeff. I don't know, I hadn't hidden anything in my eight years.
Well, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about my eight.
I did check.
Don't intend to, no.
'Cause the state does that.
And I checked with the, uh, I think Executive Director of Local Finance, and he assured me that the state has every intention of fully funding the BEP next year, because that, I, I was concerned seeing that increase from ERA funds.
Thank you.
They assured me that was not the case.
Any other questions? Move on, thirteen.
Thirteen, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven educational agreement with Rutherford County Education Association. Board approval is requested to accept the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven education agreement, it's ratified by the REA. And, uh, good work by Ms. Barnes and her team. Recommend that you approve the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven educational agreement.
Questions? Any general discussion, board members?
I would like for the Board to consider, with our, uh, September meetings being so far into the month, with, uh, two new board members coming on board, with a, uh, with needing a, uh, new chairman, uh, which would make up the executive committee with, uh, the Director of Schools, that, uh, that the Board would consider having a meeting, uh, in that first week after the members are sworn in, and, uh, where we could have some, uh, some dialogue, uh, about our construction program with, with the new board members. Uh, with Mr. Holliday having construction experience, and with Mr. Tackett having, uh, been involved in teach, education, and administration, that it'd be a good, good idea to get them involved, you know, right from the get-go.
I have a question, you talking about an additional meeting?
Yes, sir, a meeting in the first week. Uh, would you call, I guess it would be called a special call, but be an opportunity to get those, to get our chairman in place, and, uh, again, have some dialogue with our new members. Having brought it up in, in the work session, is that, is that something that can be added to the agenda?
Can be if the Board chooses, I guess.
I guess I might think about it tomorrow night, whatever.
The silence is deafening, isn't it?
Silence is deafening, it is. I guess you need to wait till the bodies are cold.
It'll take twenty-three days, huh?
Well, no.
It's sort of late in the month.
I don't know, my, my body stays pretty warm for a while.
Anything else?
Thank you for that, Mr. Blair, that felt real good.
Nothing else? Me and Jernigan.